Okay. Okay, let's get started. Welcome to the Town of Hopkinton Planning Board meeting for Monday, May 23, 2016. I'd like to start by thanking HKM for taping the and broadcasting the meeting today. We have two members absent today, so that tape will be watched by at least two people, maybe even a few more folks. I'd like to welcome our three new members to the board, and Brian Karp back through the process, the election process and the appointment process last week, so Vincent, Dave and Cliff?
Yes, you are welcome.
Before we get going with the agenda, I had Kobe pass out a letter to Claire Wright from the planning board, thanking her for her three terms of service on the planning board and also as a member of the design review board. We're really happy for all the hard work that she put in for at least 15 years, and this is just a letter to thank her for that and congratulate her on her recent election to the Board of Selectmen. Entertain a motion to send the letter?
Second.
So moved.
Moved second. Further discussion? Seeing none? How do you vote? Aye. Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Okay, tonight, we were talking about board reorganization. We'll have the public hearing on the solar panel on 201 Hayden Row, and we will restart the legacy farms north public hearings. So, for the board reorganization, we are missing two members tonight, and I don't know whether we should... We typically do this at the first meeting after the election, but let me first ask, is everyone that's here now going to make next meeting, which is?
June 13.
June 13?
Yep.
Yes. So, I think we might have a full board on the 13th, so I would propose that we put off the reelection of or reorganization of the board until the 13th and let all nine members make that decision. If that's agreeable? Agreeable?
I think that it's in the agenda. I don't know if anyone has a specific role they might want or not want, but you know, it is... We met last week to get new members in. It's on our agenda. We should move that.
I can go either way as far as it, but I just was courtesy of letting everyone vote, I thought was maybe more important than voting it tonight. That's my opinion. Entertain a motion to defer the board reorganization till our next, the beginning of our next meeting. And if that doesn't fail, then we'll do it tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none? How do you vote? Aye. Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Anyone abstain? Okay, so we're going to put that off on a six to one vote till next meeting. Continuing on, let's see, it is now 6:35, so let's get the folks...
7:35.
7:35, I'm sorry. And let's open the public hearing for 201 Hayden Row. This is a commercial solar photovoltaic special permit application and stormwater management permit application. Select Energy Development. This is a proposed 311 kilowatt commercial solar power installation on approximately 3.05 acres. Okay, so who's all going to present today?
Hi, my name is Joe Myford. Good evening, new members. Joined by Miguel Lanera of Select Energy Development.
Okay, just before we get going, we put together an outline today, and make sure Joe has got a sec. We're going to try to kind of use a similar outline like we do for most of our reviews and just to kind of go through things. Jim, can I get another one?
I've got them all.
All right. We'll share. We'll share. So basically, from the outline, why don't we do a kind of a project introduction and overall review with, by the applicant?
Okay.
If you don't mind, I'll use the board, use your freedom, point that it is to describe. This site that Select Energy Development would like you to consider is 201 Hayden Row Street. There's an existing home here at 201 where on the south end up near the intersection with Granada Street. Some of the members may recall that this parcel here, the 3.05 acres, was originally part of a larger tract that was involved with the Hayden Woods Garden Department, Davenport Lane, the condominium project up at the end of Hayden Row. It's offsite, just here at the edge of the page, to help you get some kind of reference as to where we are. What we have is 201, which is currently under construction. Before the sale of that property, the final approval of Davenport Lane, a 3.05 acre parcel was cut out of that 25-odd acres. That is the bounds of the parcel we'd like you to consider this evening. It's got the existing home under construction. It's now foundation framing. Heard it's about to start shortly. This was and is generally a residential use, but has kind of a historic past. There were some agricultural uses in this back area. Valente sold vegetables. A local landscaper rented the parcel to plant landscape stock in the 60s and 70s, so it's kind of got a mixed use in its past. You can see here the areas of the tree canopy. The majority of this site through the center is a grass condition in poor shape, and up here at the front are what you'd expect with a residential home. There are lawns, there's a driveway, there's a gravel drive that accesses this right here at the south corner, but is generally was a residential use. The land in the back has fallen out of use, not as much in the landscape and crop growing as it has been in the past. All our site flows in a northwesterly to southeasterly direction, very gently sloping in this direction here. At the easterly side is an existing vegetated wetlands highlighted by Ecotec and has been subject of reviews by the Conservation Commission as far back as '09, associated with the Davenport Lane project. There are no rare species, no historical artifacts or historical uses of any kind associated with that parcel. What we are proposing, would like you to consider, is the construction of, as Ken mentioned a moment ago, Chairman mentioned a moment ago, 300 kilowatt, 311 kilowatt electricity generation facility. The bounds of the site are still the same. Hayden Row is out here. The wetlands in Davenport is to the easterly edge. The center area is where our focus will be. About 1.3 acres of the three acre site we associated with the placement of the arrays, which I've highlighted here in red. We are in the RB zone district, and as such, we've got front, side and rear yard setbacks, 50, 25 and 20 respectively. Our arrays exceed all those requirements, so we are further from the property line boundaries than we need to be. The work associated with constructing the arrays will match up nicely with the grades that we have. We don't anticipate changing any of these flows. What flows now, northwesterly, southeasterly, preconstruction will be the same post-construction. The changes we have contemplated are associated with the construction of the arrays and handling of the stormwater. So there are several trees in here on the westerly side, along the southerly side that are in direct conflict with the array location and then in conflict with the operation, the effective operation of those arrays. The rest of the work that we propose is to mitigate those stormwater impacts. We've got grass whales at the detention basin down here in the southeast corner and along that side here, but very little in the way of changes. It's a flat site. There is not a dramatic need for cuts and fills, and our site, our designs, don't incorporate any of those. We anticipate retaining all this vegetation to the north and to the east. There's no need for us to do the tree clearing. This, quite frankly, is an area this jurisdiction, which is the local Conservation Commission, and will allow a great deal of good to happen in that location. There'll be some filtering of stormwater. There'll be habitat, plant and animal life that be retained, so in abiding by their regulations, we see a lot of benefits to our project as well. What we are removing are the trees here in the central location along the southerly boundary line to the property line, the field stone wall through here. There are a couple of trees. One has fallen, a couple in the back here that will be removed as well for the function of those arrays. So what we have proposed to offset and mitigate those impacts is a line of evergreen trees in this location and along the southern border to the northwest in that location there. Thirty trees, by my count, proposed, seven foot tall, eight foot on center. The species is up for negotiation. We are going to utilize the existing curb cut in order to fit with the designs for the homes under construction and to eliminate the need for change in that curb cut. Folks, get used to that view shed along Hayden Row. It's not our intention to change it anyway. We will bring our driveway into the facility and provide access and a turnaround at this location here. We're generally 20-foot wide and we get an awful lot of driveway by the time we provide some turning radiuses for fire and police, for safety vehicles. The project, the 1.3 acres, will be enclosed in a black vinyl chain link fence, six foot high, for security and safety reasons, with a gate here at this location, the driveway. The fencing, we've attempted to achieve the requirement of the bylaw and that the fencing maintain that minimum offset to the boundary line, and we do it for the majority of the fencing, except for a short section right here along the southerly side. In order to utilize that curb cut, provide some separation to that home, our driveway ends up in this location, but our fencing is 10-foot off the boundary line instead of the 25. We would hope that the board would consider that waiver, given the fact that we're trying to maintain that existing curb cut. As it went through the regulation, trying to gauge the impacts from our project, we feel that the arrays are a benign use. We have no buildings or facilities other than those associated with the arrays, so the arrays, concrete paths with transformers and underground utilities, there are no buildings, no maintenance shack, nothing associated with those arrays that we need to add in addition to them. There is no site lighting for those. There will be some signage on the fencing, but no other impacts that we think will be of concern to the neighbors. And as such, we mitigate the impacts we did feel, feel that we were instituted because of the designs with our proposed plantings at the northwest and the southwest corners. In keeping with the spirit of the bylaw, our vegetated clearing, as I mentioned before, does not happen on the north side, does not happen on the east side, is here along the south and west sides. It's for the effective operation of those panels. We can get as much sunlight to those panels as possible. We have included in our designs and our calculations and on the plans both construction error controls for the inspection and destruction of elements of the stormwater system and the arrays, and a long-term operation and maintenance plan to ensure the viability of the facility. There'll be set schedules for clearing of the stormwater controls in and around the panels, keep the grass low, those sorts of things, make sure that the trees are healthy and providing the screening that they're intended, and all that is in our project designs. We think that this use, this clean alternative energy, is a great use for this spot, and we think that this design meets all your approval criterias. There's summary in the submission package. We don't feel that the neighbors are going to find the use detrimental. We feel that our environmental features of the site are protected with our designs, that we comply with the standards other than the requested waiver, and that the need for a clean alternative energy source in this location with no adverse impacts to the neighborhood is a good use for this spot.
Why don't we go down the outline? Principal Planner?
The only real comments I have right now at this time is just to point out the email received from Conservation today. They had just received a filing late last week from these guys who haven't had a chance to really look at anything other than there's a piece missing with the 75-foot limit of structure setback on the plan, so I think they're setting up a hearing with you early or mid?
Yeah, our filings were a bit disjointed. I wanted to hit all the players at one time, but unfortunately Conservation lagged behind the planning board filings. I spoke with Dawn a few moments ago before their hearing started, said we intend it to be scheduled for June 6th to take up these items with the commission. We have, I use as no other issues, there's no sanitary waste, and no other group to see other than Planning and Conservation next door.
You're outside the 50, but inside the hunt?
Correct.
Inside the 75?
Correct.
So that might be of concern?
Under the local wetland bylaw, they're required to do structures outside the 70-foot, unless they request a waiver, which I believe they're going to do.
Yeah, commercial facilities need to be 75-foot, but it's something that the group can consider and waive.
Okay.
Yes.
Since you just brought that up, a quick question, Mr. Chairman. The fence, the fence line in the back, I can't tell on my copy. It looks like it's right on that 50-foot line. Is it or is it beyond?
Just inside the limit of what?
It is within the limit.
Yeah, 50.
Or it's outside the 50?
Correct, outside the 50. 52, 60.
I couldn't tell if it was inside or on it, but...
If I may, through the chair? Having been on the Concomitant team this before, I think, I have a question at least. I hear what you're saying about the curb cut and how you want to keep that going and having that with you, you have, but why not have the interior parking area, driveway, construction area, whatever, 20 feet closer and then move 25 feet closer away from the wetlands? Is that an option?
Why don't we get into that when we get more into the detailed stuff?
Sure, sure.
I mean, it's a very good question, but let's try to get through the outline and then we'll add to that. Beta?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we had prepared a review of the project. I'll run through the highlights for you. First off, we were, it is in a residential zoning district. Our first comment was, given that it's commercial use, whether it would be a good idea to consider the additional bumper zone for commercial, as per your regs for commercial facilities. I'm not clear whether the bylaws allow for that or if it's just something that might be good housekeeping practice. As the applicant mentioned, the fence within the setback, we were pointing that out and wondering if he angled his driveway a little bit as he came off from behind the house. He's probably not going to get completely out of the setback, but he might improve the distance. We realize it would also impact the backyard of the residence, but in keeping with the bylaw, thought it was worth looking at. Our next comment was purely on the visual impact to the neighboring properties. They propose screening to the majority of the neighbors, the southerly neighbor with clearing to the property line. We questioned whether that was going to provide a visual hardship from that property or not. The requirement that all utility stations next to be made underground appears to be met, with the exception that transformer pads are above ground, which is reasonable. We just would note that they could provide some additional vegetative screening, particularly at the pad near the street. Some low shrubs might just hide that. The evergreen plantings they're showing, they're showing them a straight line, and we were suggesting that if they stagger them, they can help to prevent seeing gaps between the trees. If they kind of do them stagger, two rows stagger, might be more effective screening with basically the same number of plants. The other comment we made was that by their stormwater calculations, they're considering the whole back area under the, where the arrays are as a meadow in the stormwater calculations. And our question was, given the area directly to the arrays will be in shade pretty much 100% of the time, the ability of the grasses that are there to flourish and whether they'll die back and what vegetation will actually be sustained there and whether a different type of ground cover should be planted instead. The driveway is proposed as the main construction access to the site, and as such, they're showing the typical stabilized construction entrance, and they're showing that being constructed right to the property line. And we just questioned whether or not it was prudent to have at least an agreement with the neighbor that there may be some need to restore that portion that may impact his property or whether there's an easement that might be required. We note that the Conservation will need to be involved, and also that the security fence, the detail for the security fence showed a six-inch gap, and we just wondered why. Could be for wildlife, I'm sure you can provide an answer. And lastly, majority of the stormwater comments all form around the central idea that the back, where the arrays are, is being modeled as a meadow with no impervious surfaces by the calculations. And now we understand that the way it will work is, you know, the water hits the solar arrays, it runs off, it hits the ground, and then it runs underneath the array, the next array in the row. But, so I agree with the applicant from the standpoint that it shouldn't be modeled as, you know, a parking lot, but on the contrary, I don't think it should be modeled as a natural meadow either. So I think there's some middle ground that would seem prudent, and I wonder where we could come to some consensus on that. And the last comment was on the TSS removal credit for the grass whales, and speaking with the applicant's engineer this afternoon, he had contacted me. He brought a good point that there shouldn't be any suspended solids to be removed and to worry about. The arrays themselves should be clean runoff. There's no, other than, you know, just dust from the air, there's nothing that really should be of impact, so that comment may not be necessary, and to be honest, the Concomitant will deal with that as well, so we can leave it to them.
Okay.
Okay, now we're at the point where we've kind of got an overview of the project, and now we're going to add, and this is both the planning board members first and then members of the public, to add to our outline. Adding to the outline is kind of like brainstorming. You just kind of get a subject out there. We will talk about the subject in great detail as we go down the outline. We proposed A through G. I think Frank had a good one to begin with, which was really talking about the layout, and we'll add that right on there to the outline as basically a layout and where the panels are relative to, I'll say, the upland area, I guess. So we'll add that and to that. The other ones we have, we have a detailed discussion on our waiver request, the driveway width, the meter pad location, lighting, though I don't believe there is any, so it might be a quick discussion, screening, Conservation Commission and stormwater management, which will include all of the items that Beta had put in that area. Are there other members of the board that would like to add additional? Cliff?
Yes, you had mentioned something about removal of the stone wall that is existing. Did you mention something like that at the beginning?
It's simply that our property is bounded by the stone walls, and along that southerly line, we'll be removing vegetation up to that stone wall.
Well, we won't be moving the wall.
You won't be removing the wall?
I thought you said you remove the field stone wall as well.
No, I'm sorry, we're removing the vegetation up to the property line, which is the field stone wall.
Okay.
My reason for mentioning that is there will be a visual demarcation of that line, so it's impossible for the contractors for Select to slip over into a buddy property and cut the wrong trees.
So through the chair again, you would mention that there are several trees on the, I believe, the west face that you're going to be cutting down in back of the properties that are existing?
Correct, along the westerly side, and 1, 2, 3.
Yeah.
And one has fallen down, so there are two.
And the purpose for that, taking them down, is what?
Westerly exposure along, along the westerly side, exposure from the sunlight, length in the time that those panels are in the sunlight.
Have you heard anything from the butters that they? We'll get to that, okay.
Yeah, screening's on there.
Yeah, screening's on there.
So you're still looking for items to add?
Yep. Yeah, go ahead.
Article 31 obviously states you can put the solar farm wherever you want, provided you meet certain criteria, one of which is the zoning of that particular area. Residence B states the maximum lot coverage can't be any more than 25%, yet your project looks like it's over 30 or 33%. Has anyone brought that up? Because it's a 3.05 acre lot with a 1-point-something acre array, that's a third, at least by my understanding.
Interesting point. You might look at the aisles in there as not being covered.
The lot coverage is proposed at 14% versus the 25% maximum.
14% with, because of space between the arrays?
Right.
Does that, Mr. Chair, does that include the home as well?
Yes.
14%, including the home and the arrays?
And if I may, one more question. Your maintenance plan calls for four times a year you'll be going to the facility? Minimum, four times a year. Will you be coming more than that? And what kind of vehicles will be coming in and out of that driveway? Will they be large trucks? Will be a pickup truck? Will it be something?
Pickup truck, the only thing we'll be talking about would be mowing or weed whacking of the grass whale in the basin.
Major vehicles and large?
No, the only vehicles we'll see that are large will be during the construction phase.
Okay.
Okay, so...
You're looking at items that, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead.
Just kind of give you some bullets?
Yep.
Array size, just had a question about that.
Okay. Go ahead.
The effect on Davenport?
Daven...
Court? These are probably just quick heads.
Yep, yep.
Underground utilities?
Underground.
I don't think this is appropriate, but I just want to throw it out there. Sub blocks?
It's always a good ask. Okay?
Okay.
Other ones from people? Go ahead, sir.
I was here originally for a screening on 199, which is just north of the property. That's a small lot there.
Okay. Okay.
But more importantly now, and it's a safety matter, is the pad that's going to be at the end of the street side of the lot.
Yep, we got the meter pad location as one of our bullet items.
Because I won't be able to see backing out of my driveway, the smallest bit of snow that gets piled in winter blocks my view. You know how that road is.
Absolutely.
It's going to be a tough.
Okay.
Through the chair, is that Mr. Corny?
Carrier.
Carrier.
Okay.
I think you have another one.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Jane Moran, I'm a member of the Upper Charles Trail Committee, and I'll just take two seconds of explaining why I'm here at these meetings lately. And our committee has been charged by the Board of Selectmen a few years ago to come up with some trails that go from the Milford town line to the Ashland town line, and our committee has been working hard over the years to try and figure out how this is going to happen. One, just one of the various methods of how we're going to do this is to try and approach developers as they come into town and see if they would be willing to grant us an easement, the town easement, in the 50-foot buffer zone along the, in this particular case, I think it would be the north and probably the east. And that, we have no, we have some very, you know, $50,000 visual concepts of how we're going to tie in from Milford to Ashland. But in order to do that, we have to be able to reach out to our community members in a cooperative manner and try and find out if they're willing to grant us an easement, to grant the town an easement, so that we could someday go in there and maybe urge them to help us develop this trail from one side of their property line to the other, and in joint cooperation with other property owners along the line in this 50-foot buffer zone, which is no man's land, and take an effort to achieve this goal. So I'm looking at this map and...
Before you get to Mr. Chairman, for you, could you just give us an overview for this? Because my impression is the trail would run on the west side of 85. Where do you plan on crossing over?
We have no, we have not determined where that is going to be. Our challenge as a town is that most of the railroad bed was sold off to private homeowners over the years, over the last 80 to 90 years. Our challenge is to incorporate the old railroad bed where we can, but where we can't, because it's private ownership, if they're willing to sell it to us, that would be fine, but if not, we have been charged with finding other avenues to develop this trail. One of our thoughts is to come from the Milford bike trail through College Rock, up through all of these properties, and eventually get to Tadaro, a property which the town owns, and we've already, you know, this is very premature.
So for you, Mr. Chairman, perhaps, maybe you could get us a rough outline of where you think?
We are working on that. We really are.
That would help us a lot, thank you.
That would, and I understand that. And my job, we've broken up our committee members to go out to various members, committees, and departments in the town so that we can kind of increase our communication level and try and bring everybody on board in what we're trying to do, and what, through the Board of Selectmen, and that's our avenue.
Okay. We'll put this on the outline for right now, and we'll get back to it.
Okay, very good.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more things to the outline? Well, that was good exercise, because we've got a lot of new ideas here. Screening is on the outline, yes. We will spend a lot of time talking on screening, I promise you.
Five D.
Tonight?
Well, probably, well, we'll get to it. We're going to try to get through a lot of these tonight. We will try to, some of them are going to be action items at the end of the day for those guys, or maybe even Jennifer. And, but let's try to get through all the, we've got about 20 minutes, but we're not going to rush through it. But let me try to take us and walk us through this thing. The first one was the layout of the site, which was up to kind of Frank's comment of perhaps moving it a little bit out of the wetland area. I think we kind of put that on as something that maybe ConCom is going to force that issue anyway. So, you know, right today, I don't think we want to, I'll say redesign it, you know, here, because if ConCom is going to push it to the west, that also doesn't help our friends and neighbors as well either, because it brings it a little bit further that way. It might help a couple of new people on Davenport. But I think for tonight, I think we just leave this one alone with this an overall discussion kind of on it. Won't close it out, per se. I'd like to get to the driveway width. When I looked at it, I thought the driveway width was way too, I don't know why you need a 20 to 25-foot wide driveway, particularly when this is just not going to see much traffic or anything. I mean...
The disconnect we're having is that this approach that we have on both sides of the table have taken to minimizing tree clearing, minimizing our footprint with our accessways flies in the face of what the fire chief wants to see, that the driveways need to be 20-foot wide into the facility.
Why would we need a 20-foot driveway into a bunch of solar panels for the fire chief? I just don't see any logic at all for that.
I can check into it.
Okay, they actually...
I haven't heard from them.
We haven't, I can't see any need for anything more than 10, 12-foot type of item, because you're not going to turn a fire truck around, the guy's going to back up 200 feet. I mean, it's...
For their use, they certainly only need 12 feet.
Right.
But certainly turning an engine, they would be outside the driveway, but that may be all right.
I mean, I...
It's just a grass area, it's not like it's a swamp.
It's not like, you know, there's, solar panels might burn some electrical cable, but, I mean, I don't think they're going to burn too much.
If I can add?
Yeah, go ahead.
Miguel Linares, I'm a senior project manager with Select, I'm in charge of this project. We follow NFPA 18, which regulates access to these fields. The requirement there is for 20 feet. I am more than willing to have less than that, believe me. So what I would suggest is having the fire chief, I guess, do that, have the ultimate say, if you will. But that's what we design for, therefore, the size of the driveway assists.
Does any member of the board remember what we approved over on East Main Street? I know I didn't let 20 feet go through this board, I don't think so, anyway.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, we do have a new chief. I think that may be spurring some of these changes.
One comment on previous arrays that we've done. The fire department likes to park a truck and be able to go around with other vehicles if so needed in a case of an emergency. That's the only rationale that I've been able to understand behind the width of the driveway.
Okay.
That's it. I am all open for making it less than 25 feet.
Okay, okay, okay. So the action item is for Jennifer to talk to the fire chief and kind of ask a little bit about this, because I just don't see 20 feet at all, if necessary. I mean, you know, there's...
Mr. Chairman, just one quick comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's an L there, so you said the fire truck could turn around there, so they need a little bit more room to make that turn?
Sure.
I don't know, that's the only thing I'm thinking.
Well, it's a hammerhead, through the chair.
Yeah.
It's a hammerhead, right, so they can pull in and then back in.
Pull in, turn, back out.
And back it.
And ask them that question, too, because this is, what, 200 feet on the, along the house somewhere? I'm just guessing.
Yeah.
I mean, 200 feet, half of us got driveways that are 75 to 100 feet. I mean, you know, I don't have a hammerhead for the fire chief to turn around on my driveway. I mean, I, and, you know, I just don't like 20-foot curb cuts in a residential neighborhood, if at all possible, and would love to see a little green space on that driveway between you and the neighbor. And, you know, that, you know, even though it's gravel, I mean, it's also impervious, and so that's where I'm on the width. Now, if he's adamant, then we're kind of stuck. But I don't think we've approved that to the other solar array.
I'll take that, too.
And we certainly didn't allow, I don't think, room to really turn around, if I remember that design. They could have maybe barely pulled into the array.
Yeah.
Yeah. Name and address, please.
I'm sorry. Marty Wigan, Five Cross, sorry.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
If it's a curb cut that you're concerned about, is it possible to have the curb cut be one car width? So if the requirement is for a 20-foot driveway width, which may be to accommodate two fire trucks, is it possible to have just the curb cut be the more normal driveway width?
It's, that's...
And then feed into wider driveway?
That's always possible.
So that you can accommodate the two fire trucks?
Yeah. We're going to try not to design it here for them tonight, but we're just going to give them ideas tonight when they come back and with having talked to fire chief and whatever. Let's move, got the driveway width, let's kind of go with it, it kind of goes with that security fencing and whatever. If you change the driveway a little bit, you pull off the outline and get rid of the waiver, or maybe you put the fence and put the turnaround outside the fence. I mean, you know, it just seems to me that you can make that work without the waiver if you, I'll say, kind of work at it a little bit, you know, with that corner. I'm personally not so sure that we want to set a precedent of changing and allowing that kind of a waiver on this. This is our second one only that we've approved, and I will admit it is...
Sure.
Probably one of the best, you know, one of the most, least obnoxious, other than having somebody having a field or a bunch of trees behind their house. But, I mean, solar panels don't make too much noise, and, you know, you'll get kind of used to them, I guess. But if we don't have to change the fencing and keep with the bylaw, I think that would work out much better. And if you don't have a 20-foot wide driveway, I think that gets you closer to that. But then again, I don't want to design it tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Isn't our ordinance 20 feet for an access road? Is that what I believe we have an ordinance for?
Well, this is if it was a roadway with, to a bunch of homes that don't have sprinkler systems in them, and I'm not sure this meets that criteria at all.
Right. And so that brings up my question, is there a future projection on change to this lot once the solar panels have been put in and, to get to the back?
No, no. With the waiver, this is it.
Are you referring to the width of the driveway?
Yes.
What we're hearing from the chief is that all access drives that they will need to use to treat any potential issue at this, at any site across town, will be 20-foot, 20-foot wide. We are trying to keep in line with that directive from the chief that we've now heard on a couple of projects.
But it hasn't been specified by this contractor?
No. I asked, if you sprinkle the house, you can go back to 12 feet. Doesn't make any sense to sprinkle these.
That's the genesis for the width.
I'm just trying to follow. Let's see if we can, see if there's reason on this one, because that kind of does, maybe the waiver list, whatever. We've got another 10, 15 minutes here. Let's hit the meter pad location that our friend here talked about. This is the one that's on the out front of the house. Jennifer, do you want to kind of put your finger on it, up a little bit more, right there?
There you go, yep.
Why does it have to be there and not next to the transformer in the back?
Mr. Chairman, I can talk about that one.
Okay.
I can tell you one thing, we, typically the utility does three poles. So they basically will come in and off of the closest pole, they will install three poles along the line, basically along that line. We felt it would be terrible visual for the neighborhood from either house, because it's very cluttered. I just want to show you a picture of a previous array that we did, where we also have six poles. As you can see, right over there, it's not a great picture.
And we, this board on East Main Street told them to pound sand with that.
We don't want that.
And we wouldn't allow that, so you're not going to get approval for any more poles out of this board.
So the alternative is a concrete pad, I think it's five by eight, if I'm not mistaken, where they will put the meter box.
Okay.
We haven't gotten explicit dimensions from the utility yet. It could be there, it could be five feet forward, back, or forward.
Why couldn't it be behind the house, or right next to your transformer pad?
I don't know the answer for that. We had a meeting on site, and they told us it has to be a certain distance from the pole that's right there. I'm sorry, I don't recall what that number was, but we, while meeting on the site, it was decided, this is the spot.
Well, why don't you go ask them again and tell them the planning board doesn't like it out in the front yard?
It is built, if I may add, in the property. It is not outside of the property, it's not on the street, it's not on your property, and I understand your...
It's a safety issue.
Listen, I don't unpleasant, I believe me, know all about that. I agree with you, it's a terrible street to back out of.
Well, we also, it isn't within the 50-foot setback, so you don't need zoning with that, the way I would interpret zoning.
I didn't know that that would fall under that, but I'm not trying to be argumentative.
Yeah, I know.
I feel my hands are tied because of the utility requirements or lack of negotiating in this position. I will nonetheless try to work with them as much as we can. That said, I have no issue with Beta's comment of surrounding it with evergreens or aborvites or whatever species that's...
That makes his view sound worse.
Oh, they block the track.
Actually, I think about it.
As far as it's for part of the side, I mean, slight triangle.
I didn't think about that, very good.
One clarification through the chair. I think what we're asking is that if you check with the utility to make sure that, make it known that our preference is that the pad is backed by the transformer, and if they have any requirements that it has to be near the street or a pole, then have that be...
As far away from the street as possible.
Right now, so we can see that and understand it.
The one on East Main is, I believe, several hundred feet away, because it was not anywhere near, and then they came in with three poles after we permitted without it, and we told them to go pound sand.
So, listen, I don't have a problem with that, but I cannot guarantee to you...
You can bring the ever-source person here if they don't like something that you're going to get approved or not approved.
Yeah, thanks, ever-source.
I mean, and we'll talk about the pole in the middle of the road, too, but...
Is this specifically for the neighbor, or are we talking in a general...
This is in general, in general.
We want to back off.
We want to see it, we don't want to see it.
All right.
I mean, that's, I think I'm speaking for the board there.
And to you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
The safety is better to have it back off the road for parking for the utility trucks.
I think too, minimally, it needs to meet the 50-foot setback.
Mm-hmm.
If I can add, it's not going to meet the 50-foot setback on the side, it can meet it from the front, but it won't meet it on the side due to the proximity of the lot right there.
Side is 25. Side is 25.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it. I will definitely approach them to get a better response from them.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
From my understanding, I don't have a lot of background in this, but my understanding typically is the utilities, this is a convenience, this is the meter, they want it close to the street, so they have to put as little effort in reading the meter as they can. I don't think there's any practical reason why it couldn't be further back.
Right, yeah. Electricity over 200 feet doesn't lose a little bit. Electricity over 200 feet doesn't lose a little bit.
I think they explain that they read it electronic anyway.
I think they all go to electronic, you're right. But typically, the, it's convenience for them, it's not more than that.
Okay, we gotta-
Mr. Chair, I brought up a point about underground utilities, do you wanna discuss that now?
This, this would be a good way. I, the way I view this is everything is underground that they did. I mean, you got the two pads.
The only question I had was, connection to the pole, is it underground and then just runs up the side of the pole?
It's a right, sure.
That's all I wanted to ask, thank you.
Okay.
Everything else was underground.
Okay. That part, we were, I was very happy with seeing it. Okay, we're going, let's see, let's get to, make sure we're getting through all these, so we give you an initial part, so that maybe next time, we'll, we'll come back with everything else.
Lighting?
Lighting, there was no lighting, I think we can check that all off. Uh, the screening, I think Beta's idea was, was better.
Put, uh, these along. This is, we spot another select site that, um, thought might be a, a good guy, they were not available, started Wednesday, meantime. But, uh, now, and this is what, uh, we have proposed on the plan, the seven-foot height, the eight-foot on center, you can see the, uh, black vinyl chain link fence behind it, and as they mature, uh, that gap between, obviously will go away, and, and as they grow, uh, the view shed from, uh, higher elevations, um, will be blocked. So, as a starting off point, this is what, um, we have included with our designs, this is what we're proposing.
If I may, Chair.
Go ahead.
All right. I see a couple of things that, that come to mind right off the bat with what you just handed out. And one was, when I thought, when I heard black vinyl, I thought that you would put black vinyl through the fence in order to have complete blockage of the panels. So, I'm wondering where that, um-
The, let me try this one. Mr. McDowell has been here many times, and he swears that the black vinyl fence is something you don't see as well as, I'll say, the galvanized chain link fence. And, and that's what we've, say at the other one, and also, where they had to put fencing around stuff, and I, I think he's probably right. McDowell's all, he, he doesn't like the panel either, quite frankly. Just on the top rail the last time we were at, but, uh, cause he says that's what makes it more visual than anything else, to me, the top rail. You're gonna be solar panels, which kinda look like top rails to me, so.
All right, so my next part of this is, is the abrevites, the deer like to come and chew on the abrevite, and when there's no, no food source around, and they, they don't take well for a long period of time. And, so, and like the Chair had said, you know, staggered distancing between each would allow visual impact to be at best. So, I don't think that, that abrevites are, are the right way to go under this, under this, um, design that you're with. I think that something else should be, uh, maybe, maybe brought up, or is, um, screening with regards to that, because it's just, I've seen it happen all over, where trees just get from four feet up, four feet down-
Yeah.
And there's nothing left.
If I may add, and again, I'm not gonna be wrong, these, in this installation, remote, there's nobody there, and they haven't been chewed, and I know for a fact there's deer there. So somehow, this, which I apologize, not right now, I could have that incorrect, I don't wanna quote that and say the wrong thing, was requested to us by the planning board in Holliston to, because of that, they have proven to be successful-
Okay.
-in Holliston.
Okay.
There is, there is an abrevite, deer, don't you?
Okay.
Front streethouse-
Yeah.
-got chewed up.
All gone.
Yeah, you can tell how tall the deer are.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Looking forward, I would rather, would, would be pertinent that you- Let's, uh, let's try to wrap this up today. I think we got all the ones that would result maybe in a plan change sometime. I would advise you to talk with your neighbor and try to make him as happy as he might be for, for our next meeting. Uh, I don't wanna-
What about that setback?
The, uh, does, back, they, they already know what they're possibly doing.
One of the items somebody added was array size, did that affect the plan change?
No, I just have a question about the size, because I did, 865, um, units, and they're 0.26 kilowatts, and I'm up to 324, not 250, that's wrong.
Um, tell you, give me one second. I have, um, ah, let me see, we're, sorry, we have 36 full tables, that's shown, they have 24 panels each. That's a total of 164 panels-
Yeah.
And we're, we're using 160 watt per-
Okay, it's a 260, that's in, uh-
Diet.
It's just a big deal, that's, that's fine, that's fine, thank you.
It is a 11 KW.
Okay, thank you, that's good.
Okay. And I was-
Did I just say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
There's a tree that was proposed, down at the corner of my lot, turn that over.
Sure.
Remove that tree until this discussion is finished. The trees have been knocked down. I'd wanna make sure that you can see it.
Jennifer.
Right there, that one. Cause that will screen the whole array.
From your, yeah.
And the abrevite, those abrevites of the deer have, that's, it's knocked it off. So, they're good. Deer are absolutely gone.
Yeah.
Discussion screening continue at the next meeting?
Yes, yes. I, I, I think conservation might be rearranging this a little bit, that's my gut feel. I mean, they did it on the last, last one, and then, once they do that, then things get a little, and, but I've given them some design parameters.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Since we're starting to finish this up tonight, can we make sure that they understand we're all, you know, they should be thinking about the staggered screening, the staggered plantings? And just for clarification, was there an answer, not to put anyone on the spot, but Phil, are you, are you okay not touching the tree that they're asking about?
Uh, talking about, I'd like to, it's, it's a tall, it's, it's a tall tree, and it's gonna screen the panels. I'd rather look for an alternative. It's kind of, there was two fir trees dying, and I pushed it over, and the other one has been existing.
Until after?
Yeah, I could, I could, I'm not gonna push it over.
Well, I wanna hold off until the screening puts a bed, I don't want that, like, coming over, running that thing down before we look at this to ground, figure out what's gonna happen.
I think that's, sure.
Beta report, you said, you had some comments about, um, stormwater measurements, and issues, you said, you didn't feel comfortable at all? And I'm looking at, now, of course, it's, you know, destruction, but historically, I'm looking at some, it's clearly a meadow to me.
That, that was the point, the, the existing, and they have modeled it in the proposed as a meadow. My point is that it's not, like a park, it's not a natural meadow, some-
That, that was under cultivation for 100 years.
One of the, with the last, I remember going to a farm that's up there on, in Southborough, and I was amazed how much stuff was grown underneath the panels. I mean, it was, I didn't see the, the runoff and stuff like that, that I-
Yeah, it was, it's a shade that-
Yeah, if, you know.
That, that array, that, the grass is growing underneath all the array.
Okay, let's see. Our best meeting on the 6th-
Correct.
And our next meeting is on the 13th. If, to make some changes, you won't have any time.
Yeah, we would've been sort of meeting after, but-
What's the, what's the next one after that, Jen?
What's up?
Do we have nothing on that agenda at this point?
Um, certainly nothing associated with that, that is correct.
Okay.
We potentially might add an elementary school if they, the thing that they have not filed a piece of paper yet, so.
Let's, um, let's, let's, uh, entertain a motion to continue this on the June 20, 2016 at 7:30.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote aye. Anyone opposed, anyone staying? Okay, thank you very, very productive, I think, today.
Yeah, we can do both hearings for-
Oh, and this is the stormwater and the, yes.
Oh, and we will need a, an extension request to, which means that expires on June 30.
You, you'll get-
Request from that part.
It expires on the 13th.
Push my arm for us, Frank, there we go.
Inside we hear the extension. Point salad, maybe.
Do you even hear the business going on tonight?
Yeah.
Not just like-
Okay.
Come on down.
Sorry, I missed you the night and all, if you watch the tape back.
Okay. Let's, uh, get started. We are, uh, missing two members tonight, so my opinion will be, continue the special permit stuff, serve all the people we can to that tonight, so, uh, but they will watch the tape.
Except, um, the, 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 requesting withdrawal, so.
But, yes, but, and they're not on the agenda, other than a withdrawal. This is the one-
The continuation can, is, is Roy's matter that you're thinking, which, what do you-
No, no, this, the change of the master plan buildable, and, uh, adjustment to the master plan buildable area, and master plan special permit change. So, we're gonna continue that through the next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you got, you got enough to do.
Yes.
So, there a difference between site-
Yes.
Permit for us.
Special permit is a six super majority, the other one, you only need five of us.
Right. But, even if we continue with the site plan review tonight, is it members who are not here will watch the tape back?
They, they've done it several times before.
We would want every, we would want that back.
Yes.
And I already talked to one of them, he said, problem, I-
Both of them watched it in the past.
They both have watched it ask.
Yeah.
I think he just wants six member.
Yeah, for the permit, I want, want to, before we open this, wanna preserve that out.
Cause once those two, like, are not here and watch it, this is their one meeting, they can't miss any others. So, if they do, lose their vote.
Yeah, we didn't have that.
Right, so, I think he's just trying to preserve the special permit out.
Appreciate that.
Okay. So, let's, uh, let's, with that aspect, uh, well, let's open the public here for Northwest, Northeast, and North Club Villages at Legacy Farms, occasion on an Osmond site plan review, also a special permit, without any further discussion. I'd entertain a motion to continue the master plan special permit change to-
Um, June 13th at 8:00 p.m.?
June 13th at 8:00 p.m.
So, moved.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second for the discussion, seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed, anyone staying, motion carries. Okay, so that is out of there. Now, we're opening, um, there was an outline that was put, uh, which, we're on key bullet points, so there's a table today, uh, and the out, what we've left out was the director planner report, and also an opportunity to add to the outline by the planning board. And so, we'll follow this kinda revised, everything else is pretty much the same, I think. Um, since, since we've been talking about this, um, basically, all but three of us are kinda up at a, a little bit more level. And, we've got three new members tonight. We're gonna go through, cause we're, we're speaking afresh, but we're gonna go, our three new members are right here, all on my right today. They're gonna dictate, because, that isn't to say that some of us seasoned members aren't gonna chime in and maybe help the discussion, and explain why we are these things, but it's really up for these three new members to get to the point where they're comfortable to may able to make the vote. So, they're, they're pretty quick, so far, let it go, and, and, you know, all set. The only last thing I wanna say is preliminary thing, you know, uh, Roy is working on some LNG safety stuff, and we wanna get that peer reviewed, and then, at that point, we're gonna feel, I think, a lot more comfortable about the whole thing. That's a key, uh, I'll say the, uh, the, uh, the, the plan to get, get, get to approval.
Okay.
And then, it'll take a couple of weeks probably to get peer reviewed, et cetera. Uh, so anyway, why don't we get started with kind of an adaptation, general overview, give them the soup to nuts, and you can take a little bit more time on that, if you wanna explain a lot of the features, but it's, you're, I mean, it's public, allowed to be part of this process, too. You've got three key people to listen to you.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, for the record, Mark Mastriani is the applicant of the proposal before, and here in the, with Polty Homes as well, so we're the co-applicants. And to my right is John Kousich and Matt Murva, they're the civil engineer and the landscape architect with Bowler, and he's been helping us with the, the process. Um, I just wanted to say congratulations and welcome in your election appointments. We started again at Legacy Farms, and, um, Matt actually has a intensive and thorough presentation, um, to bring you up to speed, and that's what we advocated doing, and we wanted to pretty much everything that we resubmit. And I don't think the last, here, working with the board, and working with Beta, and working with the design, the design review board, has been a waste, because it's really, that allowed us to improve our plan. The plan that we've resubmitted kind of incorporates all of the improvements and all of the comments that we've heard over the last several months, and that Matt would like to present today, and through all of the changes that, and present the, uh, the, the, the plan that we've submitted. Does that sound good, Matt?
That sounds perfect.
Okay.
Great.
And Matt Murva with Bowler? And if, he does have a plan that he wants to go through, up to the board, if he could get through it all, we can answer questions, that would be best.
Yeah, yeah, that, that works the best.
It's quite a bit of information.
It's quite a bit of information. Make a little room to... Thanks for your time tonight again with Bowler Engineering, Tech, been working with Polte on the plans for a few months now. We're excited to be back in front of you tonight and we present how we got to where we are today, but also some of the new features of the plan and really bring, bring everybody back up to speed with where we've come over the past few months. Just generally speaking, beginning of the permit process last year, we've worked closely with Conservation Commission, believe we, we need to go back to them once we have these plans approved by the planning board, but they providing very positive feedbacks so far. The plan you see before you actually brings the development from a lot of the resource areas and buffering, which the Conservation Commission was, was much in favor of. We've, we've worked closely with the fire department on roadway widths and turning radii and been able to refine the plan to their satisfaction as well. Worked closely with water and sewer department, met again with the design review board, who had ultimately signed off on the change that we've been working through. Months, they had a lot of great input on it and I'm going to walk through some of those components tonight as well. And then we've worked with, with Beta, who's been reviewing this project on behalf of the town. They provided comments on the initial submission, we responded to those comments, we met with Beta. Once those comments came out, we incorporated a lot of those ideas into the new plans and we have since met with them again to review any remaining items outstanding and have responded to that final, which we're now. The project is similar in many ways to how it started. We still have 425 units, still have 201 simplex units, we're looking at 224 family attached units. That's all consistent with the initial master plan special permit that was already approved by the master developer. In terms of the layout for the project, the original master plan special permit used about 200 acres of developable area. We've actually condensed our plan to 74 and a half acres, so like I said, the Concom was pretty excited about that reduced building footprint, pulling things in away buffers a little bit and also providing additional open space along Legacy Farms, so that there's some buffer between the units and the roadway. Also in terms of, these are now 20 feet wide, some iterations with the fire department on that, had settled on that, acceptable to them. We're providing sidewalks throughout the, for pedestrian access and we're contiguous access to open space all around the project, which I'll get into more in the track network plan. In terms of the site grading, we pointed out that the north project differs a lot from the south project that's already been permitted and approved, built, in that there's a lot of topography that we're dealing with here, which we feel is kind of a benefit to the plan because there's a lot of relief from the main track, Legacy Farms Road North, neighborhoods that are attaching to, there's a lot of grade differential. For example, in the northeast village, the driveways into the project around elevation four, sloping down away from the road, so that by the time you get down to this basin here, you're at about elevation 356. So there's about a hundred grade change here as you traverse, you're never getting a full view of, of the development, it's really kind of cascading away from you. On the north club village, here, the driveway entries are at about 444 and the village itself is up at about 480, so there's a slope here where we're able to maintain a lot of the existing vegetation on Franklin Road, Legacy Farms Road North, and that will sit up high between, with a buffer of landscape between the roadway elevation where the motorists would be and the, the units above. Northwest village, the, it is sloping away again, about 480 right here, to approximately 400 down at the base, so about 80 feet of slopes away. So you never get a full look really at, at what the whole project in its entirety is unless you're in a, looking at it from this angle. In terms of the utilities and drainage on site, our stormwater management's been designed in full compliance with the local requirements. Similar to how drainage on the south side handled in a series of bioretention areas and infiltration basins, they've been green, darker green around the, in more deep, have been submitted. These basins are designed to drain fully within 72 hours, so they're not holding water, there's no standing water in those. Sewers we're pumping are affluent to the water treatment plant that was constructed as part of the south development. Will be on 12 inch main line that will be tapping off of each of the, the new neighborhoods as those get constructed. And each village will have an eight and a 12 inch main going into those areas. Electric and phone extending into each village also from Legacy Farms Road North. Trash picking, probably works on the south side and removal will, will be handled in a similar way that the south side was with snow plowed to the sides of the road and onto the, essentially the, the front yard of roadway within the development itself. So just in terms of the landscape concept that is part of the, the planning, we kind of, walking the site with Polte extensively to understand the characteristics of the land, some of which I just mentioned in terms of topography, but also in terms of buffering properties and where we can paint some existing vegetation where there are some mature stands of trees. A lot of the, the land has been in agricultural, obviously, over the years, there aren't a lot, is, a lot of it is playing sort of old field succession type of landscape that you would see. We do have some significant vegetation, this hillside, Legacy Farms Road North, where it intersects with, which we've, we've made sure we've, we've captured and maintained along with healthy, along where the mezit properties, which we've enhanced with additional planting. And then, as I said before, we've tried to make things compact and tight so that all of the surrounding property will be maintained and there'll be a trail network going through those areas as well. And then there's some great spots such as along, there's a, pines here that we really thought was pretty special, there's an old stone foundation in this area, all of that's going to be left in its natural state, we're going to provide some additional around it to hold the home, so we can maintain features like that. In addition, in whatever existing vegetation, we're still proposing quite a bit of planting of our own. We're looking at about 1,600 new trees to be planted on site, 1,000 deciduous, and those are in addition to all the trees that were originally proposed as part of the construction of Legacy Farms Road North, be planted by the master developer. Those 1,600 trees, trees and shrubs at each individual unit, we have enlargements of those in the, the submittal package, and then quite a bit of additional landscape enhancements that I'm going to do momentarily. We're providing lighting on site as more of a wayfinding measure, we're not trying to light like a, like a large parking in the neighborhood, we're looking at 50 at intersections and other key locations just, just to provide some eyeing and wayfinding throughout the So I mentioned that we've been, we've been kind of hard at work over the past few months with the various agencies and the peer reviewer, Beta, who we've enjoyed working closely with, and I just wanted to run through some of the plan modifications as part of that process, if I could. This is sort of a diagram highlighting some of the areas, Beta's suggestions on some, some tweaks and some modifications to the plans that we thankfully have helped to enhance where we are. They suggested that we look at realigning some roadways to create less straightaways and some more interest in the, the curves and curvilinear nature of the roads. This area specific, we're able to provide more curved and aestheticizing design to that road that allows those units to start to step in and out from the edge of the roadway and create not just a, a straight line of, of front garage doors. We've also looked at staggering in and out from these particular areas like here at Maple Street, the new set of plans we had before, we actually did that everywhere, we didn't just do it, we've begun to jog the homes in about five, 10 feet so that that, that line of, of garage doors is not announced and it's a little more articulated. Looked at this, pocket parks throughout the, already proposing one right here in the village, we've one in each, each neighborhood now, there's an additional two up here, additional that we think will be great little spaces for people to, it's not a large park, but it, it sort of creates a, a buffer at intersections where you have an additional pathway with some bench seating around the perimeter, opening on to generous lawn area with some fence, light pole feature, a street sign, and then some vegetable ornamental trees create some screening between these parks and the units. So we've, we've added additional parks throughout. We've also tweaking the location of the units so that we face on to a T intersection. People tend to not like flashing right in their, in their windows as, as people are driving around the neighborhood, so we, we've made some modifications to the plans that Another, another comment that we've, a few times was to try to align the ends to roadway for, and we've actually done that, new, the sacks, all of these roadway connections now. So they were just kind of a K-turn hammerhead before, which the fire department was fine with, it was fine for safety, but strategically there'll be a little circular termination of each roadway with a, a planted median island, a bit more aesthetically pleasing. If I'm going too fast or too slow, let me know. We've all, landscape around some of the bioretention, another comment we discussed with Beta, so we've diagrammed that and incorporated that into these areas that you see in the, the lime green color here. At all of the entries from Legacy Farms Road North into our neighborhoods, providing an enhanced planting feature that'll consist of, some fencing and, and enhanced shrub planting and ornamental tree planting that'll really highlight those entries, and I'll get into that a little bit more, discuss the different neighborhoods. Additional landscape in between the, between the driveways to further calculate the division between the units, which I think will soften that look as well. We made some modifications to our original totlot design, this is in this area here, it's central to both villages, it's got a pathway that will actually connect in two locations, so you can easily access it from either direction. And we've also provided a fence along the roadway edge to keep air it's sucking, falling into the road a little bit, so we've, we've looked at some, some Beta comments relative to that, incorporated those as well. One suggestion was to, trees in the sack, we've done that in, in each of the locations that I just highlighted. And I'll talk further about the trail network, but one comment was to try to make, connect people through the site, Fib Street, up through here and back, trail network beyond that trail connection right here, which will also have some evergreen screening to buffer the views to and from the neighboring units, and will also be providing some sections of split rail fence to sort of guide on the direction they need to walk through the trails to kind of stay out of the, the more private backyards of, of those homes. Another thing we've been looking at as part of the, of our review board process, we discussed at length the idea, trying to provide distinct neighborhood identities within the overall project. What, one comment was, that we kept hearing was, don't want these all to look the same, we want them to have some distinct characteristics, and what we're going to do is incorporate a family of street flowers, flowering trees, furnishings, lighting, fencing into each of these neighborhoods, so that that theme would be picked up in their pocket parks and their entries into those neighborhoods, in the street trees that are planted along those, so that this neighborhood has a distinct character that separates it from this one, so that each one is, is unto itself. So from kind of northwest to southeast, we've got several different neighborhoods, the first one being the Hillview neighborhood, which would be characterized by having a horse chestnut, service berries, honey laced tulip trees as kind of the, in this neighborhood. In terms of shrubs and accent planting, we're looking at lilacs and rhododendron that are more in the white family of, of flowers. And one thing we're trying to do is introduce varieties of plants that were originally introduced by the mezit family's long history of horticulture into each of these neighborhoods to try to carry on that legacy that, that's been here over the years. Some of the species you'll see right out of that, that playbook, so to speak. And then the fencing in the Hillview neighborhood would be a split rail cedar fence, so you'd see that at, see that in the pocket parks, in any of that element, and then a cedar street post and actually a cedar post for a gooseneck lamp as our, our street light of that neighborhood that I prefer as Hillview. I'm really sorry you're looking at my back here. In the Eastwood Acres neighborhood... In the Eastwood Acres neighborhood, we're more in the purple family for our shrub and ornamental trees, so we're using an east by rhododendron and then characterized as a white cedar picket fence. And we would also use that same wood for our streetlight and street signs with a kind of ornamental fixture for those streetlights. And again, those elements carry through in the pocket parks and the side entrance in places where we're. Oak Glen neighborhood, still a white, but now we're using a split rail, similar street sign and streetlight, kind of cousins here in sort of the same region, so we wanted to pick up on some of that theme. But our flower palette is more in the yellow range here, and then using dog red oak and accent. And then Ridgecrest neighborhood, which is this purple bubble here, palette is more black steel aluminum type of site furnishing, so that would be our fencing element that would carry through in those pocket parks and entries. We have a decorative black lantern with a cap. Our plant palette is in the deep red to pink with accent trees, street trees of sugar maple, river birch, tupelo, zelkova in areas throughout the site. And finally, the Hallmark Heights neighborhood, and these names are just placeholders, these aren't intended to stick, but we just wanted to be able to identify them easily for discussion. But this neighborhood right here, which we're calling Hallmark Heights right now, would be characterized, instead of a fencing element, we're actually incorporating stone walls, natural stone walls on site. So that happens in the pocket park system that you see here. We're using a black post with a lantern-style light fixture, which is also incorporated with the street sign. And then our shrub palette has the mezzot rhododendron, the pink mountain laurel, and we're looking at sardine cherry, purple beach, tulip tree, and linden and elm trees in this neighborhood. So that's kind of how we broke down the neighborhood identity, and that was pretty well received by the design review board, who again gave us kind of the nod, I think this past week, that they were happy with the directions we've been taking. So all of those elements are going to be incorporated into the final plan package as we move forward here. We've also incorporated some additional features as part of just general discussion that we wanted to run through quickly, things that help to enhance the overall look and feel. One thing that we've discussed is providing additional landscape berms along Legacy Farms Road North, which you can see highlighted on this plan and a little bit better in the enlargement views. You can see kind of the lighter coloring where those berms would be three to four, five feet tall to further screen the view to and from the units that back out onto Legacy Farms Road North. So we think that'll be a nice feature to help provide some additional screening. We've taken some 3D model views of what that would look like. So this is a view actually looking right from this area across this berm at these two units, and you can just barely see the back of that one. So those are the two units right here. This berm is right here, and you can almost make out right here the roof line of these two units right here. So you can see what the change in topography and the planting along the top of that berm will do to help mitigate that view to and from. This one, I don't think you have seen. And then this would be a view. This is looking along this edge right here. You can see the sidewalk along Legacy Farms Road North right here, and you're looking across these berms, basically at the back of these units here. So those are pretty well screened by that berm as well. So again, that's happening all up and down from this basin over essentially all the way up to the end of the development. And in here, you know, we really have quite a bit of grade change already sort of built in naturally and a lot of existing vegetation to remain there. Another way we're layering up the landscape to provide some additional interest throughout the neighborhoods is providing enhancement areas where you see these highlighted nodes. In addition to the street trees that would be planted along there, where you see these highlighted areas, we would be providing additional ornamental planting. We're just showing that in each neighborhood. So there's probably 30 or 40 locations like that where we have a Type A and Type B enhancement planting, which would just simply look something like this, where in each of those A areas, you'd have some additional ornamental grasses and some upright evergreens that create a little accent planting around the street tree there, which helps to visually break up the corridor along those roadways. And then the Type B, where we have a little more space, we're providing a little bit more of an enhanced area, which would have an even larger ornamental shrub, additional ornamental grasses, and then upright evergreens and lower flowering shrub elements. And these would pick up on the neighborhood themes that we described in the previous set of plans. Any questions on landscape so far?
I have one to the chair. The trees, I mean, you've got a good array of trees. What's the percentage of evergreens versus hardwoods?
So 600 evergreens, I think we have right now, and 1,000 deciduous. So probably 60% or so deciduous, 40, I don't, roughly, that's roughly the math.
Plus 1,600 overall.
1,600 overall, yes.
All right. Only, only.
Less than 30%.
The only thing I'm, why I question that is I do believe that I'd rather see, if, in my opinion, more indigenous trees than evergreens, but I know that they pose to do more blockage with that, right? Is that?
Yeah, we're using evergreens really as the screening elements between homes as they provide year-round character for us, year-round screening. And then the deciduous trees are focused mainly as the street tree feature. So those, the way the canopy of those will grow is out of the way of cars, it doesn't block visibility. So those make great trees for along roadway edges. But back where we're trying to provide buffering and screening, we're using primarily evergreen material.
And there was something we brought up last time in conjunction with the last plan that we were listening to, is that deer like to eat those evergreens. Has that been duly noted for the type of evergreen that you're gonna?
Yeah, we're really not providing any arborvitae, which are typically, that's like a cafeteria for deer, so we're not, we're not using those. You know, it's always going to be somewhat of an issue, but we are trying to provide those in areas where we're not right up against the woods, so we're not kind of inviting the deer right up to the evergreen areas.
Yeah, but we know that they'll chew on them. They always seem to find their way.
Yeah.
So there are evergreens out there that are a little bit more expensive to get, from what I understand from our last meeting, and that might suit the purpose better for those deers that are gonna come out of the woods and.
Mr. Chair, I believe the majority of the ones they've chosen, the deer are interested in, as you mentioned, the arborvitae very much, that's like main course, a certain Texas they really like. I think the varieties they've chosen, I think.
Yeah, we're talking about spruce, white pine.
You get spruce, pine, fir, norways, various things, so I think those are far less susceptible.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, questions for you, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
So can you pull up the slide you had with the sidewalk and the berms, the berms perspective view? Because I did notice in Legacy South, the distance, and this might not be, I think the town was involved in the road and stuff, but in Legacy South, there's about 10 feet between this curbside and the sidewalk. But in Legacy North, yeah, it's called the Green Bell area. But in Legacy North, it's about two feet, if that. It's not going to look like that. How do you, because obviously there's no berm, there's winter sand's going to be there. I know, so I kind of should have prefaced this because I think you guys are doing a great job with all the buildings and everything and all the landscaping internally, and I'm coming in late to the game, so please take what I say with a grain of salt. But I'm kind of disappointed with the curb appeal look of the lack of curbs because how are you going to keep the sand and salt and crap off the green area? So maybe if you could just elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure, that's a great question. So on the south side, on the north side, we actually have more dimension between our sidewalks and the back of the roadway. So we feel that there's a better dimension for keeping grass maintainable in that area. And we've also provided curbs now that you don't see on the south side as part of our drainage and layout, and that's something I forgot to mention.
It's going to be added, sorry, or?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I think you're referring to the main road.
Yes, yeah, I wanted to clarify that, sorry. Just the main road.
In the neighborhoods.
Just the main road.
Let's talk about the main road. So the main road is designed somewhat similar but different than the south. There are some areas, you write, that are as narrow as three, three and a half feet on the grass strip. Those haven't been put in yet, so it does look narrower than it really is. But there are other areas on the north side, it really varies. It could vary anywhere from a three-foot grass strip to a 15-foot grass strip. It does vary quite a bit. And the sidewalks themselves are permeable pavement, so I don't know if you've ever driven up there, but there's over a foot of crushed stone under all the sidewalks, so those things grind very nicely. And the edges of the grass, and you'll notice the same thing on the south side, until the finished paving is done, they're always susceptible because with all the construction vehicles and cars and everybody driving on it, you're not really going to get a finished edge in that long till you put the finished paving in. You'll probably find the same thing happening on the north side. We do not want to wait as long on the north side as we have on the south side because I think the planning board has taken a very strong stand in the construction management plan where Polte's not going to have sort of free use of driving the entire length of this road. There's going to be strategic locations where they can cross the road and then everything's going to be off the road. So there's no reason why we can't pave the north road and complete all that landscaping much sooner. I would say within a year or less than the south side.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple.
Good questions, keep going.
Just a couple notes. I mean, I'm not confident that even with the paving, that you're going to be able to keep the salt and sand off. This is the way you've seen what they do on the main road, so. And I know that you guys have gone with a low-impact approach.
Yeah, lower impact, yes.
Which, to me, I mean, seems the opposite personally, in my opinion, because it's going to be, you're not keeping the sand and salt on the road, it's running off to the sites and everything, but just a point I wanted to make. I'll take a look again, but I could have sworn that in Legacy North, just about all of it were just a couple feet, not very wide, but I'll take a good look again, Roy. Maybe I can walk it with you when you start.
Anybody who wants to walk it, by the way, through the chairman, I'd be more than happy of a Saturday tour or some evening tour or whatever.
We're going to talk about sidewalk dates very shortly with that because we all need to get out there. That's okay, no. Like I said, you guys are setting the pace right now, which is okay.
The weird thing you'll find about me, just a little preface here, is I'll be more concerned with the functionality of, say, people walking and the aesthetics of it, and a little less concerned with the housing, because I know you guys have done a great job with that and other people have taken care of that.
And I would second that as well, I'm going forward, because I've, we've been hearing of people, pedestrians getting hit on bicycles and things of that nature, and it's really a concern for both David and I. I think that that'd be one of the primary things about pedestrian and foot traffic, as well as the aesthetics that go along with that.
So continuing on kind of the design and site planning aspects, just wanted to show you the architecture for those of you who are just coming on board here. Not sure how familiar you are with the product type and what we're doing here architecturally, but Polte has several different models of single-family home that they'll be building here. Those are selected by the owner at the time of purchase, and they can be customized in any number of ways. So the garage doors vary from this style to more of a barn-style door, different levels of glass and shutters, different siding materials that all get incorporated into the homeowner's selections. So we've provided, we've provided some elevations of each of the unit types, the simplexes, the seven of those that we have, as well as the duplex units, the simple attached, call them, which we're just showing you kind of some of the variety that there will be as part of those. The simplexes and duplexes on our plan are grouped together, so we tend to have subneighborhoods of simplexes in a group and subneighborhoods of duplexes in a group. We haven't mixed them all up. We're trying to create streets that have a character that's unique unto itself but also consistent and to have product type near other similar product type. So we've provided as part of our package, and we've been through with the design review board, all of our various options for those units, and these are the footprints you're looking at on the overall plans.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't remember three-story plans in place before. Are those like attic windows or is that a third story?
There's no, they're all two-story homes. There's no third story on any of the homes for most.
Both are attic.
So it's a fake dorm or just for architectural aesthetics.
Just for some interest along that roof line.
Thank you. And we've also provided plans showing kind of the various options and combinations for door styles and window styles and siding treatments, which can be accommodated for the different units. So those will be intermixed throughout the neighborhoods.
Through the chair? I had read in one of your handouts that there would not be any two alike back-to-back or side-by-each across from each other. How do you plan to make that happen?
That's at part of the sales process. If somebody wants a particular home and there's already one right there, they'll either have to select a different lot or they'll have to select a different home for the lot next door to the one that's already there. So we do that with color.
We have a similar condition to that on the south side, and there's some that are close in look, but they are, if you look closely, they are different. I think that was one of the things that was said back. I think that was one of the things that was said back when I first started attending meetings, was that we wanted that differentiation between the housing, so if we can stay close to that.
Yep, and we did discuss that at length with the design review board as well, and what we ultimately came to was that there are some controls we'll be able to put in in terms of who gets what unit, but the other thing we've done is tried to provide those neighborhood themes that also help to differentiate, you know, one section of homes from another section of homes, through streetscape and furnishings and things that aren't architecture necessarily, but they'll help to create a distinct identity for those five different groups of houses, so it's not one giant project, it's several smaller ones. So, moving down our kind of outline list, we wanted to talk a little bit about transportation and the trail network. I've brought our up-to-date trail exhibit as part of the presentation tonight, and just wanted to kind of walk through that a little bit. The trail plan is consistent with the master plan, special permit trail plan, which we've also brought with us, that showed where various connections would be, this is the, the surrounding areas are in gray, the developed area within yellow on this plan, so all of these brown symbols at the perimeter are connections to surrounding trails, and you can see that on the new trail plan, we are providing those connections. One thing that was discussed in several prior meetings was the need for some public parking to access these trailheads, which we've now provided, we've provided 20 spaces, six of them here along Legacy Farm Road, six right here, so those are both at places where you can access a trail, and then another eight down here, which is accessed off Wilson Street here. So, that's 20 spaces, it would just be a simple gravel lot that people could pull into and have access to the multitude of acres of trail network here.
Question for you, maybe this is an action I have more for Roy, when we start putting on the ONG lanterns, et cetera, why don't you integrate it into one of these? I mean, obviously, you can't put lantern where you've got a bunch of trees, or whatever, I'm not sure whether you've thought that through as to...
I actually think the lanterns, as you're coming out of Wilson Street, would give you a nice sort of a pathway of light leading up to, you know, Wilson's if coming in at dusk. I think when you park in that last area, there'll be some lighting there.
Yeah.
But protected from the bull.
But I don't, I don't think we intentionally want to rip out a lot of trees, I'm just trying to remember whether there's a nursery pathway right along the fence there, if I remember, there's something right up there.
There is, you literally can drive a car from Wilson Street all the way in, all the way around, all the way over.
And your lanterns are located in that area?
Yes, the entire lane.
Okay.
Do you want me to show you on that plan?
I think I know where they are, but I just, from the smaller one that we'd been talking about, Roy, it's...
So, so this is, I mean, this is outside here, right here, so the lanterns would be here, 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 and here, so you'll drive in, you'll park up in here, but there is a walking path around this little perimeter, which you'll have the lanterns around the whole perimeter. You're gonna feel like you're walking on Commonwealth Avenue in Boston.
Only with mosquitoes.
Same on restaurants. So, that's essentially the trail network, the roadway network in terms of transportation. I think we've been over a lot of it, but we are providing six entries into the project homes off of Legacy Farms Road North, that's consistent with the master plan, special permit. We are providing now cul-de-sacs, I mentioned, at the ends of our streets, and one thing we did to the road network that's new from the previous plan, there was a cul-de-sac here that terminated this roadway, and we actually, there was a suggestion brought up to try to tie that in to the overall roadway network, so that we didn't have a long cul-de-sac there, so we've actually made that connection now on the new plan, and that will continue along to the future active adult community of the road at that intersection right there. We're gonna provide a hammerhead at the end of Fifth Street here, so that people coming up this road have a place to turn around, that'll just be a grasspaver hammerhead to allow for that adapt movement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I know this is really just the overview, not really placing questions, but I do have a question about the roads, I brought it up back in March or April.
Go ahead, and then we're gonna kind of try to finish up in about another four or five minutes for tonight, because we've got several other things left to do.
How many homes are in the Northwest Village?
Northwest Village.
I counted on my small map, I got about 108, it could be up by a few.
Yeah, it's 103.
Yeah. Oh, it's up here, okay, 103. And then on, like, I think what is now called Road I in the North Club Village?
Club Village, yeah.
Is that...
Yep, Road I, yes.
Is that...
Right here.
Is that the one that...
You're looking at this one?
Oh, no, then maybe that's not it, I'm talking about, in the North Club Village?
Oh, I see, right here, this is I.
Is that I?
Yep, that's I, this was L, sorry.
And how many homes are there?
Just in this section?
Uh, leading up to Road H.
21, am I counting?
No, it's 21.
Well, up to here, it's about 27, I think.
Yeah, but continue down, because my whole point is, you're looking at about 103 and Road I is probably, I think with the other homes, before you get to Road H, you're looking at at least, you're looking at over 140 homes, who are really only gonna be exiting out of Road I, entering and exiting out of Road I. To go down to Road H and come out that way is not really a natural flow of traffic. If there were some kind of a blockage, well, two points really, if you have, out of those 140 some odd homes, 80 people leaving during rush hour to go to work, it creates quite a backup. The second point is, if there was some kind of blockage in the Northwest Village, how do those people have access to get other, their homes out of the street onto Legacy Farms?
Okay, well, to answer your first question, we did, we did recognize that comment when it came up, and we actually had the traffic engineer who worked on the overall master plan development weigh in on that, which I believe we have a memo from them, John.
That is correct, that was actually submitted as part of the material within the resubmission package, it was a memo from the master developer's traffic engineer.
I saw that, and I had questions about that traffic study, too.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll make sure we talk about that at our next time, and we'll kind of continue on, and it's unfortunate, we're getting to the point where they're gonna throw us out of here in another half an hour, and we've got two other things we'd better really get done tonight. So, Jennifer, what time can we continue to?
June 13th at 8:00.
Okay, entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to June 13th at 8:00, 8:00 PM. Yeah.
Second.
Rooted second for the discussion, seeing none, howdy both, aye, anyone opposed and anyone staying motion carries. Thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you for that overview, it was great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Welcome. Nice to meet you.
What was your first name again?
Mark. Are you related to Paul?
Paul Mastroianni? I am not. Should I meet?
No, maybe, I don't know, it's been a pressing question.
No, there's a ton of Mastroianni's in Milford that I have no relationship, all of my family's.
Okay, next item we're gonna bring up, we have a letter requesting withdrawal without prejudice of Legacy Farms' master plan special permit amendment, this is for the 180 senior housing, entertain a motion to request that withdrawal without prejudice, and to waive the fees on the re, on the re-submitting.
Some move.
Except for the legal ad.
Except for the legal ad.
Some move.
Second.
Rooted seconded, further discussion? Basically, we didn't get too far with that, folks, because of lack of people, et cetera, and we'll be bringing that up shortly. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed and would stay in motion carries.
Good question. Good night, guys.
Folks from Davenport here?
Yeah, they're out in the hall. We have some...
Do you want me to add, schedule a site visit to the outline?
What?
Do you want me to add to schedule a site visit to the outline of Legacy?
Oh, let's talk about that right now, we can talk about scheduling. Sidewalk, I don't think this weekend, because it's Memorial Day weekend, is a good weekend, but how about the next week on either Saturday, on that Saturday?
Saturday's good for me.
Sounds good to me. Okay, so let's plan on like 9:00, wear hiking shoes.
June 4th, I think, right?
Whatever that Saturday is, not...
It is June 4th.
June 4th.
What time?
9:00 AM.
He said 9:00, right?
9:00.
Will we meet?
And we will meet, we will meet at Legacy and Franklin.
We could just tell Roy.
Jen, you'll be able to send out a notice on that, right?
I'll send you an email.
We'll get to you guys in a second.
What was the day?
June 4th.
June 4th. For board members, the road is complete, and if you, don't just get yourself locked in, but you can drive the whole length of it, and if you move a couple traffic cones at Wilson, you can get out that way, and it's...
Mr. Chairman, sorry, one quick moment, excuse me, do you want me to have a bus? Take everybody around?
No, we're gonna walk it. Thank you.
It's fine with me, but it's a little over a mile and a half. We need our exercise.
Yeah.
I think what we gotta do is meet down at the Franklin Inn.
Yep.
And we can walk up the hill.
Yep.
Much easier walking down the hill.
Maybe we'll spot a few cars the other way.
Perfect. We got a set of paddles and everything for, whatever, emergency.
My cardiologist wants me to do that walk.
June 4th at 9:00. I'll send you an email.
I gotta talk about that.
Can I make it, I'm a delegate to the state Democratic Convention, but I've been there plenty of times, I know the location.
I'm sure I'll take you out.
You guys are gonna see it.
Yeah.
You trying to get out of the exercise?
I'll be doing a lot of walking that day.
Okay.
Yeah, guess what?
Okay, let's talk about Davenport. Come on in.
I saw it.
Okay, basically, Davenport is the kind of project, the solar farm that we were talking about earlier today.
Oh, yeah.
And they've come in with a, I'll try to make it as quick as possible, they came in with some modifications to the landscaping plan, I believe design review has seen it, they're happy with it.
Yes, very much.
And I'll see if I can find it in my pile here.
Yeah, if you could, I'd like to take a look. Is this, right?
There is that.
Oh, then I might have that, I might have that with me, just one second.
Here it is. So, and I'll... For the board members, we met with these guys before that, before they went to design review, we felt, I believe this is an administrative change, and therefore doesn't need a continued public hearing, but I will let the landscape architect kind of go through with kind of the major changes and the features of this, and then maybe we can hopefully see the approval here in the next five minutes.
Good evening, my name's Steve Cosmos, I'm the landscape architect, and I was hired to take another look at this project. The original plan that was done by Western Nurseries, well, at that time, I think the model was a little bit of a different layout, it was, so the plantings ended up being a little bit heavier on...
These are what they looked like to sell to you, I mean, they bring it up.
They were heavier on the foundation plantings, and kind of light on the streetscape, so we kind of flipped it. The units really have very limited exposure in the front, there's some porch and a garage, so we're able to reduce the planting around the buildings, and then put a lot more planting into the community, and so one of the major changes was along the entry drive, to the left is a landscape business that's been existing there, and there's a pretty strong view through the wooded area, which is actually wetlands to that, so that's heavily screened with evergreens, and then some wetland plants, and dogwoods, and winterberries, and then along the edge of the road are street trees, there's pin oaks in this case on one side, and then the opposite side, the plan showed a, you know, linear sidewalk adjacent to the curb line, and so what I did was to curve that sidewalk in, and then introduce a few birches on the inside, just to kind of give it a little more meandering, pleasant appearance, not like a bowling alley. And so then, so this area, I think, will look a lot nicer and screen that landscape area, and then within the subdivision itself, in the housing area, each unit gets a flowering tree, or a Japanese maple, or a small tree adjacent to their porch, and then the street gets quite a few more street trees than were previously proposed. And then on the previous plan, there was evergreens fully surrounding the detention basin, and what I did was to reduce that, and just put evergreens adjacent to the ballfields, so the view from the ballfields is screened, and then we did put some shrubs around the fencing, that's visible from the road, so you won't look, you know, at the chain-like fence around that detention basin, and then there's just planting, you know, some screening from the units. So, that's sort of the essence of it. In the end of the cul-de-sac, where it says rain garden, that's actually a planting that's proposed under the Conservation Commission's plan, so that's not on this plan.
Any questions?
I have one, Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
The ballfield, I don't find the ballfields to be, you know, poison to the eye so much.
Oh, it wasn't the ballfields, I was screening the detention basin for the ballfield. I wasn't screening the ballfield from the housing.
I see.
The ballfield's fine.
Yeah.
I just thought, from the ballfield, you don't really want to see the detention.
Detention basin.
Yeah, so that's all that was for.
And so, so...
It's just along the detention basin.
Your ratio for evergreens versus trees, I'm big on tree stuff, and indigenous trees versus evergreens, what do you, what's your ratio?
You mean deciduous?
It's deciduous, I'm sorry.
I, let's see, I can, let me look at my list here, I got a real list. Let's see, we got 22, 25, I would say that we got, trying to do a quickie here, it's hard, it's hard to break it out, because I got it broken into different groups, but I would say it's probably, I'm not gonna say equal, it's probably a little more deciduous than evergreen, I would say probably maybe two to one or something like that, I don't know.
A third ratio.
Yeah, more deciduous than evergreen. The whole site is fully enclosed by woods, so this whole site is like oaks, and so with the deciduous trees, I just tried to give them a little bit of color, I put in some maples, and then the evergreens are really only where we wanted to screen a view.
Okay.
Very much.
Mr. Chairman, through you, one question, and this might not be appropriate, because I'm late in the game, you guys may have already finalized this, but on the south side of your entrance road there... finalized this, but on the south side of your entrance road there, and this is my own personal opinion, I haven't had a chance to talk to the board about this, but a green belt between the sidewalk and the street, it looks like the sidewalk is great on the street, so, have you given any thought to-
Well, actually, the sidewalk, see where the three birch are?
Yeah, that part is good, but the rest of it?
Because it really drops off the grade and it's an existing wood line there, so that's really the only reason. I would have pushed it right in. And then that wall is existing out there, that entry wall, so that's where it starts.
That makes sense, I just wanted to ask the question, because where we can, we want to, in my opinion, the sidewalks away from the street if we can.
I agree, and that's why I even did that, but that was sort of the best.
The middle feature, nice, thank you.
Good question.
Go ahead.
Looks like unit 6 on the, I'm going to say it's the southerly side by the detention basin. Are there windows on that side? I mean, is there anything to block their view of the detention basin?
Is there an updated view here? Is that cohesive?
That's the old one.
That's the old plan. That unit is very close to the-
To the basin.
To the basin. And those trees were going to be like up on top, right up against the unit.
So, to answer, there are probably a few windows, but-
And you're not going to block anything from the second story anyway, obviously.
That's correct.
These units aren't set up to have much visibility to each other, you know, from one to the next, so.
Is there a way to curve that driveway a little bit and set that house over?
They're already built. Foundation, except for foundations, except for 2 and 4, I think, are all built.
You nailed it, yep.
Okay.
And half of them are, well, a lot of them are occupied.
They are.
Several of them are, yeah, most of them are sold.
Some are already occupied.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Without landscaping.
I heard from my thing.
We're getting ready to gear up and do this landscaping.
I've heard from somebody that only one or two are left to be sold.
That's, that's correct, yeah, I think we had three. Yeah, thanks, it was, it's been a good, I've got a good response.
Good for you. Through you. For the driveways, I noticed there's a gap there and I saw in person, what do you plan to put between there? Because it's like a 1 or 2 foot.
I was going to do, well, we talked about doing a little bit of a lattice screen, I'm not sure if they're going to do that, just a little fence panel at the garage that are attached to the building. And then I was going to do like Hamlin, not Hamlin, the, some grass, the, which one is it that I used?
Yeah, I think it's a challenge because it's such a narrow strip, right?
Yeah, I was going to use the feathered grass, the cow forester grass, which gets about this tall and it stays narrow and upright and just to give some separation, because in the winter, there's nothing's going to survive that strip.
Plow's going to deal with it.
And then they were going to do some natural stone in there, some bigger rivers type stone.
Doesn't really break the quality.
So that it doesn't look, just like, I don't even think it's worth a grass strip in that, you know, just lawn, so.
What about perhaps some type of stone mark?
Well, they were going to put in just some stone mulch.
No, I mean actual stone mark.
It would just be another hard surface. I think they really want to have something a little bit softer and hopefully-
It'd be something for the cars to hit as well.
Right.
The plows or whatever.
No, I mean like a walkway type.
Like a walkway type.
Flat stone, it's a little character to it.
At that point, they'd probably just pave it, which I really tried to get them not to do, because he's like, should we just pave the whole thing? I'd rather just have the strip and plant it.
Or couldn't it be like cobblestone?
Right, but it's just more pavement, even if it's cobblestone, it'd be nice to have something that's soft, it's a landscape feature. As much grass, even ornamental grass comes up.
Entertain a motion to approve this administrative change?
So moved.
Second.
Move and seconded, further discussion, seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed, anyone abstained, motion carries. And I also heard through the grapevine that you're working on the stone wall sign that some, particularly former members of this board, but-
They're coming out in June to put the-
The road or whatever it was.
It has to say Lane underneath the, like they have important word.
Are they doing it on the existing sign or are they replacing it?
It's a stone wall, right?
Yeah, it's a stone wall, there's a piece of granite that's, you know, inserted into the wall. And I don't know, the guy's coming out, I don't know if he's taking the whole piece out and adding it, I know he's getting, getting, yeah, flipping it.
Okay.
I know it's getting changed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Good luck with that, guys.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing what it looks like in the end.
Talk about coming in after the fact.
Oh, yeah, not bad.
Next, we've got 42 Main Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ed Tucker, I'm the contractor on Riggs' behalf.
Yeah.
He's out of town.
Okay, we're in a similar situation, just trying to make it quick. I understand that they may have a restaurant tenant?
Also, prior to that, we noticed there's over a 2-foot gray change in 22 feet from the front door to the sidewalk. And realizing if there was a potential restaurant, it's really not a great terrace to have chairs and tables out there. So, we, and then a few potential tenants have talked about adding walls to make it more unique to the restaurant than having everyone else have it open.
So, wanted to explain what changes you're making and then-
The original, which was approved, had a little greenery bed where the sign was located, just a corner knee wall and then a retaining wall on the west side. So, what we're proposing is keeping the same signage, extending the retaining wall on the west side out to the property line, setting the same signage on top, and then returning back with the retaining wall in two steps. So, now we'll have approximately seven inches of gray change from the front door to the wall, to the step in the street. That was not a handicap entrance, so we're going to still maintain the handicap, which is over here on the Walcott side. So, the ramp stays the same and we have the entrance here, whether it's a restaurant or still two individual tenants.
Okay, so I think it's relatively minor administrative change.
And then also I've taken the green that we're cutting out from this bed and putting it in front of the new retaining walls.
I think design review board was very happy with the change.
Yes, they actually preferred that.
So, we have recommendation from them, entertain a motion to approve this administrative change as presented. Move and seconded, further discussion, seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed, anyone abstained, motion carries. Thank you very much and sorry you had to wait forever.
Au revoir. Have a good night.
You, too. And, oh, about when are you going to get done? When's the building going to be done?
Within a month.
Within a month?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, we're making a lot of progress. One of the things we haven't made a lot of progress on is John and myself and Jennifer and Elaine, we're supposed to review the peer review stuff and quite frankly, I've just let it sit for a little while, but I promise to get to it now that the crazy election season is over.
What's this related to, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, every three-ish years, we decide whether we're going to renew the contract for Beta, who's our peer reviewer.
His name's Andrew?
What?
Andrew is his name?
Yes.
And, so anyway, we got, what, 10-ish?
I think it was about 10.
Yeah.
And we have a criteria that we're going to select them on, but part of it is, well, Beta's got one in here, the guy that left Beta's got one in here, a couple of people that used to be our peer reviewers are there. So, anyway, we still have to sort through it. I think the plan was to try to get it to the point where we'll call these 10 down to 2 or 3 or whatever seems to make the cut and then have them in here for an interview for the board members to discuss where we're at. And it's, it's a little bit hard, having done it the last time and even the time before that, I think, because it's, there's a lot of apples and oranges to try to compare these bits and, you know, it's, but we'll get, we'll get there. Okay, board members, comments, reports for the new guys, this is where you guys can bring up almost anything you want. If you want to get something on the agenda that we talk about, maybe we'll set some time, you know, to just talk about future planning and stuff like that. If there's an issue that, you know, is coming up, that's a good, good spot. Sometimes liaison report if a member is also now a member of another committee by, we have like seats on CPC and open space committees, a few others and where we're at. We also, because Claire is off of design review board pretty soon, her seat was a planning board member seat. So, if somebody would like, is interested in the plants and going through the design review and design review looks at it for us, you know, in another set of eyes and they have architects on that board, they have a landscape thing, Jeff Doherty from Angels is, I think, chairman and, you know, so they kind of look at it a lot harder than we do. The design review board only has the power to recommend to us and a lot of their recommendations is their ability to persuade the applicant to make changes where we in site plan review don't have the legal authority to say no, regardless of what it is. So, in many ways, they are our strong arm or a group that, and because they're talented, they make constructive criticism and it gets, makes for better plans, I think, so.
It ends up being a lot of like working session type things who we work more often with a lot.
Right.
And they review all sign applications.
Yep, so that's what design review is.
When they meet, or how often?
They meet the 3rd Tuesday of every month.
And if, and it's rare that they get called in for a special meeting, but I remember a couple.
I've been here a year and it's never happened.
Got it, okay. So, think about that as another commitment coming up. Let's see, correspondence, do we have anything else?
Just a couple zoning wars.
There's a couple of zoning things that were in the end of your packet, that's just in there for your information so that, you know, what the Board of Appeals is doing. And-
Are we talking at all about the master plan?
We would have it on the agenda, we took it off the agenda today because that was Fran's section with Frank that is still left to be talked about. And so, we wanted Fran and Frank to be able to present it to us. And then, then at that point, we're through it, at one point, we still have to kind of go through after that presentation just to make sure that each of the sections is consistent with the other sections. And then we'll, we'll kind of do that with comments, maybe, and we'll have Jennifer or Elaine kind of put those, all the comments together. You know, it might be one of those where you go through the Word document, you don't have to do all the English work, but just say, consistent with this goal versus this goal, you know, what is, and then we'll let them put together maybe something consistent and then we'll talk about it and then we will, the next-
Take suggestions.
Well, we'll have a master plan that this board is ready to give to all the other town committees within, within the-
Would we be able to put in our input onto that master plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I gave you all a copy.
Yeah, we got, we got a copy of it. I'm just, I'm just referencing, I'd like a couple of things to be added to that that I've noticed.
Okay, that's, you know, it's-
Write it down and you just-
It's, it's, it's a draft at this particular point. And so, then the process is, we give it out to all the other town committees for their input. Yep. And we have a public hearing on it where, you know, it's not a hearing in public, this is a public hearing, we'll probably have a special night maybe for it and just highlight just that. And we'll get that thing done hopefully this, early this next year, you know, maybe early this fall, I think, but realistically.
Be a good booty.
I mean, we've, and we'll set goals very shortly for what the board wants to do, but we'll kind of do that. We've got a lot of stuff for Mr. McDowell and stuff going on. He's anxious to get going. If you go through Legacy South, you can notice that there's very few places left to put foundations, so I think that's-
What's the percent occupied, you know, ever sold?
Well, I, as I see it, they're starting to put up houses right behind the retirement center off of Clinton Street and there's very few units left kind of near the treatment plant. Yeah, they're, I heard that the Pulte unit in Hobbiton is Pulte's best unit in all the Northeast.
Everybody's getting sales bonuses?
I suspect, I suspect. So, anyway, that's kind of where we're at. We're out of here before 11, I mean 10.
When does that last an hour earlier, at 6:00 and you went an hour late, something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's happening there.
It, you know, it, we might for Pulte, just to try to get it done, maybe have a special meeting, but during the summertime, I try like hell not to do that personally. I mean, it's, but they haven't got everything in.
Seems like they're in pretty good shape, right?
They're getting there. It's a lot, well, we've gone through many months with them.
Oh, I'm sure you have, they're getting it done a lot of work.
Yeah.
There's a lot, a lot of, a lot of lesson learned have to be codified because I won't say we don't trust them, but on the south side, they lost a lot of trust. So, like this, well, I shouldn't talk much more about it. We're not-
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Related to that, the low impact.
Yes.
Whose suggestion was that?
Basically, the Commonwealth has almost been putting that on that and some of your comments are about the same as mine.
Yeah.
I didn't, it took me a long while to get comfortable with low impact development.
Talking this nationwide, it's-
I'm still not comfortable with it.
It's, it's really tough because all the sides of the roads are robed. I mean, you look at Legacy South, it just, to me, it's, I don't, it doesn't, you're right, it doesn't look as finished, but I don't know, I'm a dinosaur, too.
To me, it seems like a cheap way of not putting in the infrastructure for the drainage.
And these rain gardens, Lord knows if they keep being maintained and whether they work as good as they are, I, but, you know.
Well, be open minded though, right?
Well, until the next FAD comes along, that's what the Commonwealth is doing.
I wonder if they sold that unit 6, next to the detention farm in Devon. They said they sold almost all of them, they never mentioned they sold that particular unit.
I don't think they've sold the 2 there.
On the north side.
I don't know, they said all but 3, but, and they're going for good money, too. Anyway, okay, look for a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Second. Move and seconded, all those that want to stay.
Discussion?
Oh.
I was going to say, welcome to the 3 new guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you for going easy on us.
Yes, yes. Okay, all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone wants to stay?
Yes, Brian, I would be.
You're by yourself. Reunion adjourned.